Here, all right. All right, do I have the motion tonight to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Robinson makes that motion at a second.
I'll second.
Councilor Mewar, second. Any discussion? If not, you'll do roll call, please.
Councilmember Mewbauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Udvig.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
And Mayor Feldman.
Aye. Okay. A question from, for Dave Shapps. I have just a clarification on an item here, on item. For fire truck item D, do I have to pull it out just to give a simple clarification?
I, no, if you're just doing a quick clarification and the motion is going through as presented, then no, just.
Okay, all right, I just want to bring to the attention of council here. I talked to our fire chief Dave Schmidt today. The fire truck is being purchased by the, is being built by the company E1, that's the manufacturer in Florida, okay? Fire Safety Rochester, Minnesota is their, is their dealer, okay? They, they're, they sell E1's products, okay? And H Jack, which is Houston Galveston. Tell me about their, Dave, what's that, except, it's an access council or something like that, I believe it is, and H Jack. H Jack is the consortium that gives us the best pricing for it. So basically you have three companies, that E1 makes it, then you have Fire Safety who sells it, and then H Jack is the consortium for it. So that you understand that. And then so, so, you know, like I say, in our first presentation on the 19th of April, we saw E1. We did not know until this contract comes out now about fire safety is the contract that we signed with them out of Rochester, Minnesota. And once again, H Jack is the consortium that allows us to get the pricing we are getting. And just for your other knowledge, from the original price, we saw $540,000. It's $5,448 with some adjustments that the chief and assistant chief made, which they're fine with. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. There, in this packet now, we're dealing actually with three companies, but it's actually one company's building it. So. Hope you don't have any questions on that, so I bring it to your attention. Okay, so that the total amount, I believe, of this, of this purchase is going to be is going to be set at $540,000, $534,552, okay? So we actually saved some money there from some changes they made already have signed off on, so. Just want to bring that to your attention, okay? On that, I will entertain a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
A second, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Udvig makes that second, any further discussion? Not you do roll call, please.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mewbauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Udvig.
Aye.
Mayor Feldman.
Aye, all right, thank you very much. Moving on to a meeting open to the public, Joe, do we have anyone?
Um, now would be the time for anyone who does not have an item on the agenda to speak to the city council about anything, really.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll move on to a new business. Nine is new business nine eight, that's the CUP amendment. Forty-one forty street to St. Francis Boulevard, St. Francis Auto Parts. One resolution two thousand twenty-one dash sixteen, approving the conditional use permit amendment. So Kate, that's for you.
That's for me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Beth, okay, great, thank you.
Joe, could you let me share, please? There we go. All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, before you, is a request to amend an existing conditional use permit for the property that's located at forty-one forty St. Francis Boulevard Northwest. This is adjacent to the Police and Public Works Building along Highway forty-seven. So the amendment to the CUP would include adding allowable uses to the site. There is an existing salvage yard on the site today. And the existing building houses seven vehicle sales offices. The original CUP for this property was approved back in nineteen eighty-seven and has been amended several times since then. Most recent amendment to the CUP was back in two thousand and three. And at this point, the property is approved for salvage yard use, but not for vehicle sales, which makes the existing vehicle sales use non-conforming. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the existing CUP to bring the vehicle sales use into compliance and to add additional permitted uses on the site. So these uses include the salvage yard that's already there, used vehicle sales, major auto repair, and outdoor storage. So I'll go into each of these a little bit here in a second. The property itself is guided for business park and light industrial use, and it's zoned I-1 general industrial. And this is a district that's meant to provide for higher intensity industrial areas that have convenient access to major streets. So the uses that are proposed with this amendment are consistent with the land use guidance and the zoning for this property. So I'll touch on each of the requested uses here in a little bit more detail. So first is the scrap or salvage yard. So this is an existing conditional use, which was approved back in nineteen eighty-seven. This use appears to be operating in conformance with the approved CUP, and no changes are requested. The second use to discuss is that vehicle sales use. So this is a conditional use in the I-1 district. Currently, there are seven used vehicle sales offices that are on the north end of the existing building, so those ones that are circled in red here. The applicant is requesting the ability to increase the number of offices to fifteen. He's proposing to add five offices immediately on the eastern side of the building and then to have these added additional three at a later date. No exterior changes to the building are planned as part of this. The applicant is requesting to be allowed to utilize the southeast corner of the site for open and outdoor storage for things such as vehicles, RVs, boats, and similar items. In the two thousand and three conditional use permit, a similar location was marked for personal storage, which included a storage structure, but that was never built. Open and outdoor storage is a conditional use in the I-1 district today. The outdoor storage area is proposed as roughly one hundred and sixty by one hundred and sixty square feet, and will need to be hard-surfaced. Storage taking place.
Whatever, you need to mute. All right, thank you.
There we go, no problem. So an internal driveway is proposed along the east side of the property, that's that orange line on the screen. And that would be to give access to this kind of back area with the storage. And an administrative site plan review would be required prior to construction of that driveway to ensure that it surfaced and located appropriately. So the applicant has indicated that this, this use specifically is something that may not occur immediately, but might, might be in a little bit. And lastly, the applicant is requesting to have five major auto repair bays within the existing building. Major auto repair is a permitted with standards use in the I-1 district. And the proposed use meets the code requirements for auto repair. And again, no exterior building changes would be required for this use either. The applicant is showing two parking lots on the site that would provide a total of one hundred and sixty-one parking spaces. Between all of the uses on the site, one hundred and seventeen parking spaces are required. So there is enough parking proposed on the site. The existing parking lot is that rectangular one to the north, and that would contain ninety-one parking spaces. And these would mainly be used for the used vehicle sales parking spaces. Part of the state requirements for used vehicle sales is that there are at least five parking spaces per office. So with fifteen offices, seventy-five spaces are needed. And this parking lot should be striped according to code. The second parking lot. Excuse me, the second parking lot is proposed south of the existing lot, and this lot would contain seventy parking spaces. Salvage yard and the auto repair fees and customers. And this parking lot should follow the requirements for all new parking lots in the city, so that means hard surface and curb and gutter. The planning commission discussed this application and held a public hearing at their April meeting. No members of the public spoke for or against the project. The planning commission discussed the timing of the proposed improvements with the applicant and the possibility of landscaping along Highway forty-seven. The planning commission was overall supportive of the project and recommended approval of the CUP amendment. So city council action for this item is requested this evening. Council can choose to approve, deny, or table the request for the amendment. If council is interested in approving the CUP amendment, there are just a couple of changes to the proposed conditions of approval that I'll go through now really quickly. Let's see here. So this is on the bottom of page thirty-five of your packet, condition ten. Staff has been in contact with MinDOT about this parcel. The applicant hasn't shown that any work is proposed within the right-of-way for Highway forty-seven as a result of this amendment. Therefore, a driveway permit from MinDOT would not be needed. If work is going to be done within right-of-way, then a permit would be required. And that's something that's covered in condition number twenty-one. So this condition ten is just proposed to be removed, it's not needed. The second change is on page thirty-six of your packet, condition fifteen. And this condition is just a clarification to provide more direction to the applicant of what the city is, is looking for when we say a stormwater management plan. So it's mainly just meant to provide direction and help the applicant understand what we're looking for. Those are the two changes to the conditions that are proposed. So with that, the suggested motion is on your screen as well as in your packet. And I will stop here and answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is here tonight as well, if you have questions for him.
Okay, does, does the applicant want to say anything at this time?
Um, seemed to cover it pretty good, but you know, like back in oh-three, there still is when they ordered the conditional use permit. Can you hear me or not? Can you guys hear me? Um, they put in their display of used autos for sale instead of used cars for sale. So that's why, that's why they, we got the seven offices in. And then now we, now there's confusion. On the words, that's all.
Okay, so, Kate or Beth, you want to lighten him on why we're doing this, that we've done some changes to codes and that? And so you want to lighten him on that, or should we do it?
Uh, we can, Mr. Mayor. You know, we've been in contact with the applicant several times here over the course of this application. And, and what he's getting at is that there is a phrase in the two thousand and three permit that allows an area of the site for display of used vehicles. But the actual use of vehicle sales is not explicitly permitted. So that's, that's what we're covering here to, to fix that and then to allow the other uses that he's requesting as part of this amendment.
Okay. Do you understand that, sir?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that was brought up.
Okay, right, and I, I know, I'm sure, rest of council, I know I read your letter, so I want to make sure that that's clear, the reason why we're doing this.
Yep, yep.
And so let me ask you, go ahead now, say.
I'm listening, I don't have nothing else to say, I'm listening.
Okay, so at this point, what I'm asking is, now, this is, this area of parking is going to be asphalted, curved, and striped? In the area?
Yeah, one part of the, the parking lot is already, will be striped, it is blacktopped. This one that is not is.
Talking about the new part.
The future.
The new part.
If that's what you want, I don't know where, curbs are really much curved, you know, it's all sand back there, you know, but I guess we can do curbs, I guess, I don't know where we're going to run the water all off to, you know, I mean. Right now, it's all kind of slopes into the one, we got one drain pond back there, but.
Okay, is there anything, Beth, you'd like to address on that, or Kate, address on that one? I mean, asphalt and stripe is necessary, is the curb necessary or not?
Um, Mr. Mayor, that is something that's required for all parking lots in the city. So a new parking lot would be required to have that.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. I'll turn this over to council for any comments they have, Joel, you have any comments on this?
I guess, just for clarification purposes, touching on what the mayor was just talking about, giving it's an existing kind of parking lot, so to speak, back there where the dirt is and the sand, does that mean it doesn't need to do any anything different there, is that kind of weird out with that, does that make sense? Beth?
I think so, sorry, you, you cut out in the middle of it there, so I was just trying to. If you want to just reword it quick again, so I can catch it all.
So just touching on what the mayor said, since it's existing already, it doesn't, it's kind of, it's grandfathered in, so to speak, as is, the, the back area that he was talking about, that's all sand, he doesn't need the curbs there? Or is he being required to pave that and curb it? I guess that's kind of just my clarification there.
Sure, yep. So Mayor and Council, the existing paved parking lot that's on the north end, we would not be requiring changes to that aside from striping. But the new parking lot, that second one to the south, that's where the curb and gutter would be required. And then it's something that I've worked with the city engineer to make sure that that's something that we wanted, so.
Okay, I was just kind of clearing up what Steve was touching on, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Sarah, your comments?
Uh, just kind of curb and gutters, I mean, it's pretty much virgin country back there, I don't know where we would have the water all run off to, though. That could be an issue, maybe.
And so. That, that question is why staff is asking for a stormwater management plan as well? Just to make sure that we do know where that water is going and that it can be managed appropriately.
Okay, Sarah, your comment is.
That was my question was, where is the stormwater going to be going, so thank you, Beth, for that, um. Just, that was my question is, where is it going to be going if we're gonna, I mean. So, um, yeah, I guess as long as we figure out where that water is going to be going and it's going to work okay, then I guess this is okay.
Rob, your comments?
Well, I'm a little confused on, on the whole layout. For the conditional use permit, we need to have this many parking spaces. Into my view of the plans, it appears that there's personal storage area behind the building, which is also indicated as where the public parking would be, so. I don't know that we're, we're getting everything out of the space, because if it's private, that means that it belongs to the building for their personal parking, and it really doesn't provide parking to the CPU. This, does that make sense? Beth?
Yes, yep, Mayor and Council. If you look at what's on the screen here, this northern part where my cursor is right now is the existing paved parking lot.
Yes.
This one to the south would be the new parking lot, and then this area in yellow is the personal storage. So there are two distinct areas, but we are requiring a scaled site plan as part of the conditions of approval that would show that more clearly.
Okay, because, you know, looking at the page, let's see what page that is on the page fifty-five, and it appears to me that the parking lot goes all the way back to the back lot line, so I don't know where the personal storage space starts and stops in that diagram on page fifty-five.
Yep, and Mayor and Council, that is what that, the site plan and the condition of approval will, will show more clearly.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I had.
Okay, Kevin, your comments?
You bet, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was, uh, sitting in on the planning zoning meeting when Rick, the applicant first, when we talked about this. My first concern was the aesthetics, overall aesthetics and the exterior of the building, I know Rick has been here for twenty-four years, which I'm all for free enterprise and business and anything that's important, you know, that's been in St. Francis that long, it's, you know, supply either jobs and or economic benefit to the city in some capacity. Junkyards get a bad rap because they're treated differently from place to place and by owner, by owner. Again, my, my concern is aesthetics, says you're coming into St. Francis, this is what you see. And Rick said he planned to do some of these improvements over a period of time, and he, you know, was getting, at some point, he wants to do something else in his life, so. Uh, I, I was encouraging him to, you know, make the changes sooner than later on some, at least on the front side, on the back side, just to be assured that he's, won't be treated any different than any other business that's come to town or been in town. Asphalt and curb is required in some of these areas, and even the EPA requires some of this stuff, so it's not just what the city wants, it's what the state requires for businesses like this as well. People concerned about runoff, oils, petroleum, any, any cast-off of automobile product is, is always a concern and is a red flag in a lot of communities, so. You know, this wouldn't, some of these things wouldn't even be allowed in some places, but again, Rick's had a twenty-four year history with the city, which I can respect. But again, if he wants to enhance his business and do it properly and by the letters of what our ordinance to say, I, I'm all for it. And again, we don't pick out or pick on people or single people out. He wants to make some changes to his business, some of these changes require conforming to current ordinances that are in play, and I wish him well, I hope he can follow through as, as he can, so that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Kevin. I just want to say here, the reason we ask for curves when we're doing assholes, because asphalt is an impervious material, so where you have not asphalt and you have just regular ground, the ground can seep, you know, take in the water and that, and it will drain into, you know, common area like a pool area or, or like a wetland area, whatever. But once you go to asphalt, you make it impervious, you have to direct the water where you want it to go. And that's done by curves, so it's not something we're doing to punish you. And as Kevin alluded to, it's, there's, there's, you know, things out of our control that made state guidelines, whatever, that we have to do. But that is the reason you do curb with impervious, because again, asphalt doesn't soak water. Water runs off asphalt and water will go wherever it wants to go unless you direct it, that's why we put curbs in, so I just want to bring that to your attention. Any other comments by council at this time? Any other comments by the applicant at all at this time?
Well, just to clarify, we've been there thirty-eight years. That's all, instead of twenty-four.
Okay. And we're glad you're there and we want to help you go further, so. Change in the city, if you noticed, things have changed a little bit in the city, so. We're not the old rural city anymore, we're a combination of rural and a little more urban now, and we're a little different direction, but we are pro to business. And we wish you success in your endeavors. So on that, um, can I have a, a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash sixteen, approving the conditional use permit amendment for forty-one forty St. Francis Boulevard, St. Francis Auto Parts, so I have a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, how about, how about Councilor Mewbauer makes the first, I'll take it, Councilman Robinson makes the second, is that right?
Sure.
Okay, okay, any further discussion? If not, you'll do roll call, please.
Mayor, Joe is asked to that I do the roll call for this one, so Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Udvig?
Aye.
Councilmember Mewbauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Nay.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye. All right, motion passes four to one, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to item nine B, the kennel ordinance two-seven-two, second series, second reading. And number two, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seventeen, authorizing summary publication.
Mayor and Council, so before you tonight is the second reading of our kennel ordinance. This is an update that is done due to changes and updates in the zoning code. We discussed this two weeks ago, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do want to make a note, though, is in the packet, it reads resolution two thousand twenty-one dash sixteen, and it should be dash seventeen. With that, I would be happy to answer any question.
Okay, I, I take it, this is second reading, so we've pretty much already been through this, so it's just a matter of formality here, so. I have no further comments on it, Sarah, how about you?
I have no comments either, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Kevin?
No, sir, I have nothing to comment on, thank you.
Okay. Rob?
I have nothing to comment on this.
Okay, Joe?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Okay, and, and I just, I didn't catch that, but Kate, you said the resolution's numbers changed on this?
Um, Mayor and Council, so on the packet agenda, it identifies it as two thousand twenty-one dash seventeen, which is correct, but in the actual packet, it got mislabeled as sixteen, but the correct numbering is seventeen.
Okay, I just want to make sure I read right, okay. All right, so. Do I have a, a motion to adopt ordinance two-seven-two, second series, second reading? And I'll accompany that, Dave, with the resolution to, can I do it like that, or I have to do two separate motions?
Mr. Mayor, we, we needed to, two separate motions, because one is an ordinance and one is a resolution.
Okay, all right, so do I have a motion for ordinance two-seven-two, second series, second reading, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Udvig makes that motion by a second.
I'll second.
Councilor Mewbauer makes the second, okay. Any further discussion? If not, Kate will do roll call, I believe.
Councilmember Udvig?
Aye.
Councilmember Mewbauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the second item, motion, I need a motion for resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seventeen, rising summary publication. I have a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilor Mewbauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Council Robinson makes the second. Any further discussion? If not, Kate, do roll call, please.
Councilmember Mewbauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Udvig?
Aye.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Items. Peddlers, seven-three, second series, second reading, and item two, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash eighteen, authorizing summary publication.
Mayor and Council, before you tonight is the second reading for our peddler solicitors and transit merchants. This is an ordinance that was approved back in two thousand and eighteen and, and got jumped over when we were adding and updating other ordinances. We went through this two weeks ago, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, tonight before you is the second reading and the summary publication as well.
All right, thank you, Kate, I have no comments, we've already been through this on discussion two weeks ago, as you alluded to, so. Kevin, do you have any comments?
No comment here, Your Honor.
Okay, Joel, any comments from you?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Rob, any comments from you?
Nothing from me.
Okay, Sarah?
No, nothing to add.
Okay, so on that, do I, can I entertain a motion for ordinance two, three, second series, second reading, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Council Robinson makes the second, any further discussion? If not, Kate, do roll call on this one.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Udvig?
Aye.
Councilmember Mewbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Now, motion for item two, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash eighteen, authorizing summary publication. Do I have a motion?
Make, I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mewbauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Udvig makes a second, any discussion? If not, Joe, do roll call at your back, or Kate?
Councilmember Bauer? Councilmember Bauer?
Hi.
Councilmember Uddig?
Hi.
Councilmember Robinson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mehlbauer?
Hi.
Mayor Feldman?
Hi.
All right, these are all pretty simple, seeing as we already discussed this two weeks ago. Um, we're pretty much into it, so, been on to item nine D, a storage, ordinance two seven four, second series, second reading. And item two of that, uh, item D is, uh, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash nineteen, authorizing summary publication.
Mayor and council, before you tonight is the second reading for the storage units and self-storage. This was originally in our business, uh, regulations and licensing. And what we did with the updates of the zoning code was to move it over, so essentially we are deleting, um, all of this from chapter six. Tonight before you is the second reading, and then in addition to the resolution for the summary publication, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Kate, you know, as I've seen it before, I, I like it when, when these things are, are more, uh, finetted, so that there's no such, less gray areas. And I'm sure somebody will always pick out something we didn't see, but the more you can, uh, uh, clarify it, make it, make it specific, the better it is in the long run for all of us. So, I, I'm all pro for it, as, and it's been discussed two weeks ago, so I have no further comments. Joe, do you have any comments on this?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Rob?
Nothing.
Okay, Sarah? Kevin?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, so do I have a motion, can I get a motion for ordinance two seven four, second series, second reading, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All right, Councilor Robinson makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Council Robert Bauer makes a second, any further discussion? If not, Joe, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Robinson?
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer?
Hi.
Councilmember Mehlbauer?
Hi.
Councilmember Uddig?
Hi.
Mayor Feldman?
Hi.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Moving on to item number two, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash nineteen, authorizing summary publication, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Uddig makes a second, any discussion? If not, Joe, do a roll call, please.
Um, Councilmember Uddig?
Hi.
Mayor Feldman?
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer?
Hi.
Councilmember Robinson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mehlbauer?
Hi.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Okay, moving on to item nine E, targeted residential picketing ordinance, two, ordinance, two seven, five second speeding.
And, Mr. Mayor, I can take that one, this is the second reading of the targeted residential picketing ordinance. Uh, council was able to view this at the meeting, uh, two weeks ago. Once again, it is not regulating the content of the speech, but it is placed, putting reasonable time, place and manner restrictions on it. Uh, and staff is recommending approval.
All right, thank you, Dave. Todd, do you have any comment on this, or you are for this, I take it?
Yep, definitely pro for this, uh, I don't have any comment at this time on it.
All right, thank you, Todd, all right, uh, uh, Kevin, any comment on this before we go to vote on it?
No, I have no other comment, I'm, I'm for it as well, again, we're not trying to limit free speech, it's just where it's done and the, uh, what it really does is it impedes. When these things aren't adhered to, it impedes to the neighborhood. Usually the people that are getting harassed are not there, they're not even in the resident during the situation. I've talked to several law enforcement individuals and they say the same thing, even some of the neighbors have moved out in some of these areas. Um, so it, it's really kind of a, we're not trying to squelch anybody's right to, to first, to free speech, it's just. Um, you know, it makes, do it where, what the problem is, not the residents, you know, in a device, and they shouldn't be harassed and grained because of, uh. Concerns like this, so I agree with it.
Thank you, Kevin. Sarah, your comments?
No, I, I like this resolution, I agree with the comments that Kevin made and. If our police chief says it's good and it looks good to him and our attorney says it's good, then I'm fine with it.
All right, thank you. Rob, your comments?
Um, I don't have any comments on, on this, uh, my only concern was, is there no resolution for publication for this ordinance needed?
I know there's not, just due to this, uh, size of the ordinance. It's relatively small.
Anything else, Rob?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Joe, your comments?
I think you already answered this, Dave, but I'm gonna ask anyway, just for clarification for the record. Um, so if a non-union builder wanted to build somewhere and the union wanted to picket them. It does not limit them or prohibit them from doing so, and could you explain, I guess, a little bit more in depth, what it does prohibit?
Um, it would prohibit picketing outside of a residence. So if they would want to, uh, picket somewhere else, like in a park. Um, they would be able to do that, again, it's a reasonable time, place and manner, um, restriction. Uh, to residential targeted picketing outside of presumably somebody's home.
Okay.
So basically, there are other avenues.
Right, no, that makes sense, I was just curious as to what the limit was, and I had somebody ask me about that, so I just wanted clarification, I think you answered it by saying it doesn't. Regulate the content, but mainly makes it to where it's, uh, you can't, no, I'm good.
That is correct, we are not regulating the, the content of the message.
But, uh, and so it, it says here to provide reasonable restrictions on the time and the place, but explain what manner of protected speeches, what is manner of protected speech?
Uh, how you're, what the speech is, whether it's a placard, or whether it's slogans, or whether it's giving speeches. Um, or whether it's, um, handing out leaflets.
Okay, and this, Dave, really pertains more to residential areas, right?
It, it does, that's why it's targeted residential picketing, it's outside of an, individual's home.
Okay, all right, all right, well, no further conversation, can I, uh, uh, adopt ordinance two seven five, second series, target residential picketing? The motion?
I'll make that.
Councilor Mewbar makes the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Robinson makes the second, any further discussion? If not, Joe, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Uddig?
Hi.
Councilmember Robinson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mehlbauer?
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer?
Hi.
Mayor Feldman?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much, motion passed. All right, moving on to item nine F, dog licensing regulations. Ordinance two seven six, second series, first reading.
Mayor and council, so this is the start of the second group of ordinances that I'm gonna push through with some of the zoning changes. Um, and how it fell over to other sections, so, chapter eight, dog licensing, also, um, kind of overlaps with our. Uh, chapter ten in regards to our zoning and chapter six in regards to our kennel license that we did the second reading tonight. Um, it's hard to tell in the packet, but one of the things we worked through was, um, updating the number of dogs allowed. And the parcel size that is identified in zoning, and also working with, um, the chief in regards to tagging requirements. So those are the updates that are within this ordinance in regards to, um, also keeping, you know, annoyances and disturbances. With that, um, I'd have, I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise tonight is the first reading. Um, the timeline would be provided, if this goes through as a first reading tonight, it would be effective at the end of June. Um, with that, either myself or, or the chief would be happy to answer any question.
Okay, so basically, this is just, uh, up from a ten to, to, I mean, from chapter ten zoning, chapter six. What this is about?
Correct, so we have language that was in all, all three chapters, so one, one step is a cleanup, the other step. Is eliminating some of the tagging, um, language that is no longer used.
Okay, Todd, do you have any comments on this yourself, as far as this, on your end?
No, I believe it's pretty straightforward, like Kate said, it's. One of the main parts is just removing the tagging, because we, we do not issue the tags anymore, and that language was still in there, so that's been removed. And some other word changes from must to may, uh, to allow a little further discretion on, on the officer end, so.
Okay, all right, very good, uh, Sarah, your comments on this?[1211.98]
Well, I looked it over and I think it looks pretty good. You know, we we went through pretty good. Pretty good um. Discussion about dog stuff a while back, so I think we kind of are on the same page and Kate probably knew pretty well what we wanted. A lot of things, so I think it I think it looked good.
Well, let me just say, Todd, Todd, this makes it more ma- makes it easier for your officers when called out on a call or our licensed people, I mean our.
Uh, we're basically gonna follow our same procedure, but again, it just. Uh, just some of the really minor wording changes we changed um or recommending to change. Would just allow our officers a little more discretion, so they're in conformance with the language and the and the ordinance, so. Again, and some of the language was must, we must do this, must issue issue a citation. We changed that to May, so it's just officer officer a little more discretion, so. But all in all, our same procedure is gonna be followed.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? All right, thank you, Todd. Sir, any other comments you have? No, Rob, anything you have to say?
I have nothing on this subject, no.
Okay, Joe?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, no, I like the term chief use officer discretion. I'm I'm gonna err on the side of common sense. Might be a little more interjected here and as we go down the road and if there was a pattern of misuse by the officer, I'd see certain officers that are. You know, pro dog or not, so but common sense sounds like it's interjected here and I'm appreciative of it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, in that case, do I have a motion to adopt Dog Licensing and Regulations Ordinance two seven six, second series, first reading?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, if it makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Bauer makes a second. Any further discussion? If not, Joe DeRocca, please.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Advig.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Mulebauer. Mayor Feldman.
Hi, all right, motion passes, thank you. All right, moving on to item nine G tobacco ordinance two seven seven, second series, first reading.
And council before you tonight is an update for our business licensing ordinance in regards to tobacco. This is a change mainly because of the age requirements have changed. So within the code, you'll see it went from the age of eighteen to the age of twenty one. I worked on this as well with the chief and we are here to answer any questions. This would be a first reading tonight. If approved, it would be effective the end of June.
All right, thank you, Kate. One question I have here is is does this entail or or address vaping at all? Or is that an issue we should be addressing or or not? Kate, Dave, Todd, anyone?
Todd, can you take out? So we did address um. Some clarification of definitions and uses. Todd, I guess maybe I'll let you take that one.
Yeah, basically, it's gonna include also vaping as far as sales to people under twenty one, so. Uh, it's gonna go right along with the tobacco language, so it does address it in that sense and also um. As far as um.
It says nicotine nicotine inhaler delivery devices.
Yeah.
On there.
Yeah, basically a vape device.
Okay. I just wanna make sure because it seems to be so out there now and uh whatever. Anyway, all right, thank you. Rob, your comments on this at all?
Um, not really. Um, my understanding about the ordinance is just kind of um off sale. It's not restricting any business to be non-smoking inside their businesses. By any means, is that a different ordinance or is that, you know, state run?
Correct, mayor and council, so this this is just for the licensing for the sale of the tobacco product, not the use.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, Joe, your comments?
I don't.
Okay, Sarah, your comments?
No, I don't really have any additional comments on it either. Um, I guess I had kind of the same. Uh, question about just making sure, but then I did see um that they did have the smoking devices or, you know. Tobacco related devices, so I figured that would cover the vape pens and yes, they are very, very, very popular with the younger crowd right now.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Uh, no comment on this, Mayor.
Okay, all right, on that, in that case, do I have a motion to adopt tobacco ordinance two seven seven, second series, first reading? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Councilor Bauer makes that motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Right, all right. Second, um, any further discussion? If not, Georgia roll call, please.
Councilmember Mulebauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Advig.
Hi.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi. Okay, thank you, motion passes. Moving on to item nine H saunas, massage parlors and similar adult oriented services. Ordinance two seven eight, second series, first reading.
Mayor and council, before you tonight is update to our massage therapy and saunas. In regards to um some of the the language that would help us be successful in the event. A business decided to go into some of the illegal activities of prostitution, sex trafficking. So a lot of cities have updated these ordinances. Our ordinance was needed for updating um in regards to some of the language in chapter ten and and getting that coordinated with zoning. But also just in the language itself. In updating this one and following what other cities are doing, we also wrapped in the massage therapist licensing. Currently, we have that as two ordinances. Um, we'll go through that next for deletion, but this takes the two ordinances. Creates it into one and then gives us better language to not only support the businesses that are doing this the correct way. But to enforce um what we need to against businesses that are trying to do illegal practices. Um, I've also worked on this one with the chief. If there are any questions, we are here to help. Um, the timeline with this is the first reading, but this would be effective at the end of June. Um, with that, I'll take any questions.
No, thank you, Kate. Now, this is an important thing here because as long as the business is running right, we don't have an issue, but when it's not running right, we we need to be able to correct it. Or at least enforce it, so if you're at that, the clarification of this is really. Um, because that those are situations out there, those are those, some of those places aren't running right. And we have to be able to correct that officially and quickly, so um Todd, do you have anything else that you wanna comment on this or do you feel is adequate?
I I do feel it's adequate. Um, I think it's very thorough and I think it's a good way to get ahead of some things if we ever had to deal with this type of. Stuff in the future, so.
Yeah, and I think that's important to be ahead of it, not behind it, that's for sure. Okay, Kevin, your comments? Thank you, Todd.
I have no further comments, Mayor. Good, it's good housekeeping and it's time to do it.
Okay, good. Joe, your comments?
Uh, good job, Kate. Assistant after and.
Rob, your comments?
I wasn't sure if Joe was breaking up or I or my computer wasn't bringing in all the information. Um, I have no comment on this group.
All right, thank you. Sarah, your comments?
No comment on this either. I think it's it's well done, so thank you.
Well, hopefully a lot will have to enforce it, but if we do, it'll be a place to enforce it, and that's what's important. Okay, thank you. Case to have a motion to adopt. Do we know who's talking?
I muted, I muted them, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, do you have a motion to adopt saunas, massage parlors and similar adult oriented services ordinance two seven eight? Second series, first reading, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mulebar makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, it makes a second. Any further discussion? If not, Joe DeRocca, please.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mulebauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Advig.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi. Okay, motion passes, thank you. Moving on to item nine I, massage therapist license ordinance two seven nine, second series, first reading.
Mayor and council, before you tonight is a request to delete chapter six, section ten, as this is the language that was folded in. To our new section nine, so all of this language would come out of city code. Um, and be part of the previous ordinance. Uh, if this is a first reading tonight, it would be effective the end of June and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Kate. No, I like I like I like the straightening up the language is good and clarification, I always like, so moving on to uh. Kevin's comments on this, anything that you have, Kevin?
I have nothing to add, Your Honor.
Okay, Rob?
I'll use Kevin's line, good housekeeping, no comment.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sarah, yours?
I have nothing to add either, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Joe, your comments?
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. On that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt massage therapist license ordinance two seven nine, second series, first reading, do I? Have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Bauer makes a second. Any further discussion? If not, Joe DeRocca, please.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mulebauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Advig.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi. Okay, motion passes, thank you. Moving on to item nine J, adult entertainment ordinance two eight zero, second series, first reading.
Mayor and council, so last one for tonight. Um, with this one, again, this is a housekeeping. Much of this language was updated with the zoning code, so what we were able to do is split apart. Um, take the zoning code out, put it in chapter ten, leave behind the adult business licensing section. Um, which are more towards the bottom half of this ordinance, so this is a cleanup step. If tonight we go through as a first reading, this would all be effective on June twenty first. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kate. No, I don't have any questions. Uh, housekeeping's good. All right, move on to Kevin, your comments on this?
I'm really glad to see us do things like this, so we don't end up in headlines next day and that everybody's shocked and appalled that we weren't in front of this, so. You're in front of it, you guys have all done a good job. I'm for it.
All right, Joe, your comments?
I have nothing to add again on this one.
Sarah, your comments?
No, I think again, it's, you know, good housekeeping. Thank you, Kevin, for bringing that to us. We like the good housekeeping.
The seal, the seal of good housekeeping by St. Francis, I like that, all right, and our staff. Rob, your comments?
Uh, no comment on this subject.
All right, on that, I'll I'd like to entertain a motion for adopting adult entertainment ordinance two eight zero, second series, first reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
This guy has a second, Joe had to be forced, Councilor Robinson has this time, there's a second, ready for the discussion? Joe DeRocca, please.
Councilmember Mulebauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Advig.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi, all right, thank you very much for all the work on this, you guys. Clean this up is a good thing. It'll help us in the future and uh make things a little easier for our police, fire and staff and everybody, so, uh, good job. All right, moving on to item nine K, Anderson Companies Extension.
Mayor and council, before you tonight is an extension request. Um, we entered into an agreement with Anderson Companies in regards to the lot at thirty five eighteen Bridge Street. Uh, the initial concept was for the senior living. That senior living concept is no longer moving forward, however. Um, Joe and I are both working with Mr. Anderson in regards to possible other ideas on this site. Um, staff is recommending a extension request for the ninety days as identified in the agreement. So we can kind of go through and see if there are another uses or potential ideas that may be successful for that site. Uh, before you tonight is the letter from Anderson Companies and the original agreement from November. I'm happy to answer any questions and Mr. Anderson is also on this Zoom call, if you have questions for him.
All right, well, uh, yeah, I'm sorry that the assistant didn't go. Anderson Companies will be able to do something on retail or whatever in that area. And I'm looking forward to, uh, I'm all for attention and hope for the best. Um, I guess I I was hoping for the senior housing, but that doesn't work out. But um hopefully you guys between Anderson Companies and staff will come up with an idea that will work on that street and off the river, so. Uh, Greg, do you have any comments you wanna say, council, this time yourself?
Um, only thank you for the consideration previously. Uh, we had a group I was working with couldn't work. Quickly enough with us to get ahead of a code change that's coming in August. Otherwise, I think we could have made it through, so I appreciate you considering the request for extension and I think there's some other ideas that. Will be put in front of staff here in the next few weeks that can be fruitful, so.
All right, thank you, Craig. I hope so too, by the way, so uh, Rob, your comments on this, if any?
Well, you know, we had talked about, you know, locking in pieces of land to make sure that we. Am I still here? Cause my computer kind of froze out. Okay, um. I, if the senior living isn't gonna go in, um, I'm for allowing. Uh, Anderson Group to come back um with other presentations, but right now I'm not um in favor of. Locking this piece of land down for another ninety days, that um we're going through a growth spurt right here and I think that. Um, somebody else may come in um to do something with that piece of property and I can't see. Um, locking it down for another ninety days with the idea of locking it down another ninety days after that, so um that's where I stand on it.
All right, thank you. Sarah, your comments?
Um, I guess I really don't have have a problem extending the agreement. We haven't had an overabundance of um interest in that land, really, we haven't. And I don't, I don't think, me and Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, have we had, um. Do we have people who are looking at that land that are waiting to put something there?
Mayor and council, at this time, we don't, we do not have anybody else waiting. Um, we do have meetings scheduled with Mr. Anderson to talk about other ideas. So we are, I guess, in the mindset of of continuing with him at this time because there is not. You know, other property investors that are looking at that site.
Correct, all right, thank you. That's all I have then. I think we should, I'm in favor of extending the ninety days.
All right, Kevin, your comments? Thank you, sir.
No, I'm excited about the possibilities. Um, I think Rob maybe to give him a clue, might be first right of refusal of Mr. Anderson. Now the opportunity, but you know, he's already gone this far down the road and I'm sure they spent some money on some researching. Especially going, you know, talking to the DNR and whatnot. I feel he's he's worthy of the opportunity to go another ninety days. Building materials are going sky high, so I can't see anybody coming in with something, uh, within ninety days as well. It's it's uh. This gentleman's paid his dues, there's companies paid the dues and I think we have to hear him out and see what comes of it, so I'm for it.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Joe, your comments?
Yeah, I would have to pretty much just mimic what Kevin just said. Other than that, I have nothing.
All right, thank you, Joe. Yeah, I just wanna go ahead and say, um, you know, uh. Anderson has devoted time and money to this area here. I think I I don't think I'm too starting this too far off, Greg, if I go on to say that you're probably as disappointed as we are about the assisted living project, so. Um, especially with your timing and all that for that code change and all that, that I know you're trying to rush to get that permit by July, so. Um, you know, I I'm hoping that again between staff and you'll be able to figure out something like an outrigger restaurant type of thing, take advantage of the rum. River, which I think you see uh potential there, uh, but do I think it's definitely worth giving the ninety days to? Absolutely, so. Um, I I am completely for it and I hope it just comes to a real situation of a fruition of a plan that can come to full. Value of full life and we'll see some something go there that'll benefit the city and the company, both sides. That's a good type of thing, so. Um, do I do I need a motion on this, Dave, then, for this one to be approved for the extension, right? Okay, so do I have a motion to um for an extension of ninety days on a letter of intent um to Anderson Companies? Uh, for the property at the uh, the, just say thirty five eighteen, do I have a motion? Okay, all right, how about Councilor Odo makes the first, Councilor Robinson makes the second. Any further discussion? If not, Joe DeRocca, please.
Councilmember Advig.
Hi.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mulebauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Nate.
Uh, Mayor Feldman.
Hi. Motion passes four to one. Thank you, Greg. Hope so, hope everything works out, but thank you for your efforts so far. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Joe, moving up meeting open to public, do we have any meeting over the public second time around?
Now is for the opportunity for anyone who's attending the meeting to address the city council, just state your name and address first and you can address the council.
Okay, uh, none I see, or you see?
Yeah. Correct.
Okay, on that, uh, we don't have any department reports, so I'll move on to council member reports and I'll start with uh Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I missed the finance meeting last week, I apologize for that. I uh. I just it slipped my mind, I didn't have it in my phone, so I apologize for that. I did, uh, in uh compensation for that, I did embarrass myself and go to another Oak Grove City Council meeting. Last Monday night and um I talked to the city administrator beforehand, they seemed positive. I talked to their in our engineer, Craig, he seemed positive. I went to the meeting and was very disappointed. Uh, they're narrow minded, um, they're just not thinking past the the front of their podium there. Um, I left in disgust, um, I don't know what else to say. The mayor's gonna pursue some of the other avenues there, but. You know, it's really about bridge building, reaching out to other cities, doing stuff just like we're doing now then and. And I say any from time to time in Athens, I mean, you know, courteous conversation, professional conversation. Thoughtful conversation, intelligent conversation. Uh, this dialogue is lacking a lot of that. And I'm really disappointed and our neighbors to the southeast there, so. Nevertheless, maybe we'll get something done with a mediator from uh, state Minnesota regarding uh, MSA money, et cetera, et cetera, but. Other than that, um, also been in contact with one of the school board members. And and also talked, uh, emailed with the chief about an opportunity for them to give an honest and fair presentation regarding SRO in the school system. Um, according to the chief, there's some opportunity there. Uh, they apparently we're only allowed two minutes. I talked to the. One of the school board members, he said, oh, no, if you get on the agenda, you can have longer than that, so uh, as much time and effort's been put into this already and. Um, you know, they should get their fair shake anyway. Uh, I was just made to hear that the council member or board member also said that. They haven't had much feedback, but I don't think the public really knew what was going on, so maybe if the door cracks open again and we get an opportunity, you know, the chief will get a fair shot at it and. Our public, uh, the citizens will be served and the parents and will be served property, so. Other than that, um, last thing, um, do Kate, do we have anything? I had a, one of the residents contacted me about people leaving stuff at the end of the driveway saying free. Uh, garments, garbage, bathtubs, toilets, sinks, whatever. Um, do we have anything? On the books that for can forego that or can our code enforcement officer? Be doing some friendly door knocking on stuff like that? It is unsightly. I've seen some avocado green toilets and sinks and bathtubs at the end of driveways and. And again, the resident also expresses made at the end of his street or his neighborhood was looking blighted because people are printing great freeze and stuff out there, sofas. Things are getting wet, that um, it's not goodwill at the end of the curb anymore, but can you give us any light on that or do we need to shake things up a little bit in that regard, Kate?
Mayor and council, so if we are um called with an address, we definitely can um send it out as a code enforcement. I mean, if it's there for a day, that would be one thing, but if it's sitting there several days, it's back to the junk and debris and we can, we can enforce that through code.
So it starts with a friendly door knocking anyway and not not the the heavy hand of long arm of the law, it would be just a courtesy call kind of thing, it's a hey, let's tidy up.
Yep, correct. We we can have, um, you know, either our our CF, you know, Lyle go out there or, you know, Jody could just. If they, we we already have their contact information, we can reach out to them that way, too, so.
Okay, I'll pass it on back to the, I I appreciate that. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
I think, well, one thing you didn't mention is recycle days that you worked.
I got it, you're right. I, it was a, it was a busy week than I thought. Um, I made it there from nine to noon, I had a family obligation afterwards, but uh. It was fun, the Knights of Columbus guys that I hang out with at the uh, the leaf disposal area in the middle, the scrap middle area, they're a lot of fun, they're good natured, good hearted guys and um. Again, the city employees did an awesome job, everybody was bright and cheery for a gloomy kinda, yeah, maybe a little bit of dampness of a day. But uh, it was it was still a good time and I'm glad to see the citizens come out and do it. Um, if the sun was shining, I'm sure we had a much bigger attendance, but uh, I'm glad we're doing it and the stuff stays out of our ditches, not at the end of the driveways and. Et cetera, and keeps the mosquito population at a low uh situation, so, thank you, Mayor.
All right, job well done, thank you. All right, Sarah, your comments?
Um, well, I did attend this via Zoom, I attended the school board meeting on Monday, the twenty sixth. Um. Um, I will be attending in person the May tenth um school board meeting. They are open to public, so we're allowed to go, so. I will be going there. Um, I've had conversations with the superintendent, I had conversations with a few of the school board members now. Um, and I think we're making a little headway, I'm not sure we're making enough headway, I don't think we're ever gonna make enough. At this point, but um, yes, there, um, you know. I think at least the board is understanding that, you know. It's not that, it's not that we can't accept that they they don't. They might not want an SRO, like I can accept that. But what I can't accept is the way they went about it, like just kinda trying to push it through without. And um, you know, being told that, you know. The majority of the emails that they got were, you know, anti-police. Okay, well, from according to the school board members that I spoke with, they got like three or four emails. Well, that's hardly the majority of the the school and you have, you know, that's. That's, you're always gonna get the ones who, you know, complain about it are, you know, we're gonna hear from them, so um. It wasn't, it wasn't a good, um, wasn't good and, you know, I'm sure Todd knows and I shared with Steve. That um, our finance director is also leaving. Our district, which is a huge hit for us, um. It would be like, it would be like Darcy leaving us, I would not be happy. Um, I I would hold her hostage. Sorry, Todd, don't bring out the, but seriously, it would be, it's a, it's a huge hit for our district. Um, actually, any of our department heads, I would have big problems with you guys leaving, so, um. So it's just, um, and yes, um. Most of the time, to be honest with you, there aren't a lot of people there for public comment, so. They probably would give you more than a couple minutes anyway, but yes, my point was to get us on the agenda. Because then you, you're guaranteed ten to fifteen minutes, you know, so um. Hopefully, we can get that done and uh, at least then Todd and. So, hopefully, we can get that done. And at least then Todd and Amanda can make their presentation. And at least, you know, at least the school board can ask the questions directly to Todd and directly to Amanda and get the answers. Instead of, you know, superintendent just kind of deciding the information that she's gonna pass along. I think it's very important that they hear it from the chief. So, I think this is, you know, gonna be. And like I said, I'm not saying that this is gonna necessarily save the SRO. But at least the school board gets to make an informed decision rather than just, you know, going, oh, well, we need to cut. And this is where we can cut, you know. So, I do want to report that I heard from, from a few people that they thought that our recycling day went much smoother this year. They just thought that it, the way it was set up, and I don't know if it was differently set up than last year, not Kevin or Jason would have to tell me that. But people just felt that it went, it went more smoothly and it just, it flowed better. And there was a better understanding of the workers of what they were supposed to do and how they were gonna do it. So, kudos to that team. And then tomorrow from six to seven thirty via Zoom is the mental health, is our second mental health forum for the community ed team. And you can still go online and register for that. From six to about seven, it will be just watching the movie from your own device. And then from seven to seven thirty, there will be a panel from the district that will be talking about some things that can be helpful to parents, some things that you can work on with kids and anxiety and stuff. So, and then this afternoon, I did go watch our middle school, boys and girls track team. We have a lot of new kids out there, but it was, it was nice to get out there and see them being able to participate without masks. I will say that some of the kids still did choose to run with masks or do their events with masks. But, you know, St. Francis is one of the districts that is allowing spectators at their track meet. So, it was fun to go to that and I will be attending the high school track meet on Thursday as well.
All right, moving on to Rob, your comments?
Apologies for missing the last city council meeting. I had something come up and it kept me out way later than I really wanted to be. Nothing really to pass on, from what it sounds like with the school board. That maybe the PTO isn't moving as fast as we would like them to move on getting the word out. I'm not advocating by any means to bash the school board. But I can guarantee you, social media within our school district and some of the fine websites that we have out there or, you know, social media groups within the CS St. Francis and maybe even Oak Grove. They definitely get the word out and, and they can make or break any decisions, I think, with the way the school board wants to move with the SRO. I just think we need to get that information out to the parents. We've let the PTO deal with it for a little while. And, and to me, there isn't a lot of movement in that. So, I would encourage people to, you know, residents, tell other residents, so on and so forth. If you've ever been bullied in school, you know that a resource officer is, is something that's a must. So, I think we need to move forward on, on advocating that the school board does the right thing. Or we vote them out. That's how I, I perceive it. Nothing else. For me, working tons of overtime due to, I don't know, it seems like another uptick of COVID. But I just pray everyone stays, you know, healthy. We're doing a great job at the city as far as combating COVID. And I want to thank all the department heads and Joe. So, I appreciate all that and that's really all I have to say.
All right, thanks, Rob. Joe, your comments?
Well, as far as the SRO, I guess I, I made my comments on Facebook previously. And I know Sarah wanted to talk with him and I seen a couple other council members go on Facebook and mentioned after a recent incident happened, I believe it was in Plymouth. I didn't engage, given that we have open meeting laws and all that stuff. So, I observed it. Some of the comments on there is, you know, why isn't St. Francis offered to pay so much? And basically what's going on right now is for these schools that are in our city, the high school, the middle school, elementary school, whatever, our city is paying a hundred percent for calls for students that come from outside cities. So, our, our tax base is paying a hundred percent for any calls that are made within our city to those schools. So, just to clarify that and hopefully, St. Francis taxpayers understand that as well. And other people from other cities that are within the district that we are definitely paying our fair share, if not more than. Other than that, I attended the Inoka County Fire Protection Council, pretty much just observed as Mayor Feldman did the voting when it came to the budget. I'm sure he'll talk about that. Also had the privilege of attending two classes of the St. Francis Citizens Academy. I would encourage anybody to check it out. I think it's, one, it helps to give you a different perspective on law enforcement. You get to see some things firsthand. You get to participate in some things firsthand. And it's definitely a really cool program. Really gotta applaud Lyle for that. I think that's really awesome. So, and the chief for allowing us to do that. So, I'm hopefully gonna get there this Wednesday as well. But definitely really cool and really enjoyed my time there. So, I will say that. Other than that, I have nothing else.
I thank you, Joe. I'm glad you attended. That's really good to get that perspective and you're interested in that. So.
Mr. Mayor, can I, I forgot. Can I ask Craig one question quick? Craig?
All right, I was just gonna ask something too, if it's the same thing, but you can go ahead yourself.
I got a question today. So, do we know, Craig, about when the work on the two forty-first, two thirty-ninth youth tammer act, do we know about when that might be starting?
No, it's gonna be bid on the eleventh.
Okay.
And then they, they have until September thirtieth. Of course, it's not gonna take that long. So, probably a three week project at the most. But once we get the schedule, then we'll get that out to the residents.
Okay, all right.
We gave them a fairly large window so they could fit it into their schedule and get better pricing. So.
Okay, all right. And then I also forgot, Liz Fairbanks asked me to apologize to everybody. It was her phone. She thought it, she had it on mute. And she's like, I'm so sorry. So, her apologies to all of us for the loud noise on the phone.
Okay. All right, thank you, Sarah. All right, well, what I wanted to bring up to Craig and I talked to Sarah, Sarah brought this to my attention and I did discuss it with Craig. Is that people at the last projects we did last year, I think it was Butterfield and two twenty-fifth, are wondering about the sod when that's gonna be down. And, and we, and we seeded, but we have no control of the sun and watering. We don't put down a sod because then we'd have to water numerous times to get it to take. The best way to go is with the seed. And that's in progress. But once again, to see the results of it is more long term. The end result is good, but it takes a long time for it to catch. But it needs rain and sun, two things that neither, none of our council members or staff have control of nor do our engineers. So, I'll let Craig address that about those two properties, just to get on record that we are aware of what they're talking about. It says that we are susceptible, again, to rain and sun. Craig, any comments you have on that, those projects last year?
So, so again, you know, none of the road costs were assessed to the residents. One thing that was decided early on was the seed instead of sodding. It would have been considerably more money to sod. And really, that ain't the best solution on a lot of lawns. Because if they're not gonna irrigate, as soon as the thirty day warranty is up on the contractors and they stop watering, that sod will immediately die. So, we did decide to seed and we dormant seeded, which was late, late last year. Dormant seeding can be hit or miss. But I was out there probably two or three weeks ago, just before, when it was starting to warm up. And some of it was coming and then we got the cold snap. I haven't been out there since. In summary, the contractors keeping track of it. We haven't had really a good two weeks of growing weather yet. It's been warm, but then it got cold again. So, we'll just have to keep an eye on it, maybe hit it with some more seed if needed. But we'll have to have a little patience. But main thing to know is that it's not getting sodded. So.
Right. And also, and also to let everybody know, there's been no final payment to those projects. So, we're still, you know, we're still waiting to have the end results here with the sod. So, it isn't that the city's ignoring it or that, or that we're not, you know, that we're just, you know, letting the contractor go. It's not like that. So, for, just for the record, we are on top of it. It will be done. But as Craig alluded to, patience does pay off. And, and, and the fact that the cost of sod is more, and then after that thirty day period, if you don't water it, that sod doesn't take. Well, then you're pretty much S O L. So, this scene is the proper way to go. It just takes some time for it to take. I'll give an example, on Riverbank, as we all know, we, we seeded it and then it had tremendous rainfall and washed it all away. We had to re-again. So, take a couple of times until it takes. Yes, it may happen. Just be patient. We're not ignoring the areas. But I hope, appreciate people listening and maybe appreciate the nice roadway you have and curb and all the other work that was done there. I hope you can, I hope you like that and be patient with the seed and you'll have it all in the long run down the road. Any other comments you want to make on that, Craig, or did I think we've stated it pretty good?
No, I think we covered it.
All right, good. Thank you. Okay, so, one other thing I want to just bring up here on that one ordinance we did on picketing. Just so I have it, so knowledge of the public, if they're listening to, the ordinance attached is drafted as a time, place and manner. It does not consider the content of the speech. It just, it just is drafted to, it addresses time, place and manner. Dave, is that correct? Okay.
That is correct.
Content, but the time, place and manner.
We do not regulate content. We don't regulate what the message is, just the time, place and manner.
Yes, thank you for that. Okay, moving on to, let's see, the person, the SRO is one of the most frustrating situations here. Because I've looked at it and I've passed this on to Kevin has seen it, Sarah's seen it. Joe has seen it, Todd has seen it. But the SRO, there, this is all public record. I found this on Google and brought, and brought it to their attention of the names I just mentioned. So, this is public record. Anyone can find this out. By the way, all you have to do is Google up a two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget for the school district and you'll find out the same thing I found out. But their revenue is sixty-one million, nine hundred three thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars. I did the math on this. I times it by point one, two, zero, six percent, which equivalates to seventy-four thousand, six hundred fifty-five five dollars and fifty cents, which is the amount of an SRO officer. Todd, you can jump in and correct my moron on that. That before I would get rid of such a small percentage of your revenue towards an SRO, I would be looking at other bigger items that would affect your deficit for shortfalls, such as buses, maintenance, so on and so forth. And I'm just gonna go on record and all that because it's very frustrating that you're gonna take out an SRO officer that has, has got the trust of the students, works with the teachers, works with the parents. And as Rob alluded to before, something, they're onsite, right there like bullying, they have training programs. They do many, many things other than just monitor hallways. How we cannot oppress that upon that, that school district is beyond me. I, I just understand it. I just don't understand how that small percentage of a big revenue is the, is the key to you getting past your shortfalls and debt. I just don't get that. So, I'm hoping that the school district will allow Todd more than two minutes to talk and bring his point up with Amanda and show that this SRO is an important thing. I think I would rather see two SROs than one SRO, but, you know, attached to the Alice program. But at the same time, do I believe in SRO is important? Yes. Do I believe they should be looking at other areas to make their shortfalls, cutbacks and stuff like that? Yes, I do. And other for that to be done. But this is not an area that should be done. It should be the last thing, not the first thing on their plate. Once again, it's point one, six percent on their revenue. Get your books in order. Hire an SRO and keep our children safe in your school. That's a good thing. And I'm gonna go on record and all that. They can hate me if they want. I don't really care. I just would emphasize to all council members though, as you address the, the the school district on your post pages, just make sure that you have people understand you're doing that as a resident, not as a council member. Because that's important. We don't have any power as a council to them, but we do have as taxpayers and that's what we are. But I just, I just, I'm just so frustrated that they can't seem to understand. It's, it's pittance. It's a small amount of money to your big revenue. Look in bigger, bigger and better places to find out where to commit the cuts and get your house in order. Moving on to the next item here. I just would like to talk about Oak Grove, which is another one of my sore spots in my life. Have reached out to the Minnesota Municipal Sam and I've talked to their assistant, executive assistant there, Rebecca. I've also reached out to Dan Erickson, who is their engineer. And I've explained to him through an email that I copied Craig on. I think Craig, was that email I copied you on, was that pretty accurate for Poppy Street?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would just say that I'm hoping, what the surprise to me, by the way, was, and Kevin told me, the surprise was the two towns that I always know are gonna vote against St. Francis, that's a given, pretty much. But there was a third entity that majority changed that I talked about before election in November, that I thought would come across here. And I was just surprised that one of those gentlemen didn't vote for this project. You know, this is eleven hundred feet of road and his credit told me it's actually half that to them, five hundred fifty feet. The fact that they even wanted us to even, even pay for the easement, you know, purchasing easements on their side of the line is, that's not even a discussion with us as far as I'm concerned. But my point being is, this is the only road we, to the tension of, of the Minnesota Municipal State Aid Program, the only road, eleven hundred feet, that's all, one road and all. And all that we did, working with them to solve their wastewater problem, just boggles my mind that you can't even meet us a quarter of the way or just a ten percent of the way or something to get this road. I walk this road every day. I live here and I see the road falling apart. To seal coat it or crack fill it is a total, total waste of time and money. So, to me, I'm hoping that this, Daniel, I will reach out to, I will reach out to you when I find out the results. I'm not, I'm not hoping for a lot. They have the money in their account. There, and, and there's no reason not to do it. It was told to them by their engineer and their city administrator that this road amount of money that we've been reduced, by the way, it started out to be two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. We reduced it to a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And now it's down to a hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars there and, and still, we can't get them to come across. I don't know what else it will take. I even asked one of the council members there, what is it about St. Francis they don't like? He has no answer to that question. So, I, I don't know, after what we did, saving a hundred millions of dollars per issue with the ponds residents, I can't understand why these do this one project for us, you know. But, you know, once again, it is what it is. So, I would just say that I'm gonna keep you, I'm reaching out to, again, Dan Erickson and people in his, his department to get any help we can and negotiate this or mediate this to get this project done. You know, we picked up the sidewalk on our side. We picked up, you know, it's cribs on both sides. There's some utilities that's out of our pocket. But it's, it's just a hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars out of their six hundred and eleven thousand dollars that they have allotted by the MSA for their road projects. It won't even, and that was told to them and they still voted against it. I, I don't understand it. But I will just say to you this, I was hoping for a relationship, working as sister cities for the benefit of both of our residents on both sides of the eye of the line there. I know we've made that effort, but it hasn't been reciprocated. I don't know if it ever will be. But I can only tell you, as future discussions go down, with any work with Oak Grove in the future, I'm gonna be very leery unless they come across in a, in a workable way here, get this road done. I'm not threatening of any kind. I'm gonna be very leery unless they come across in a in a workable way here, get this road done. I'm not threatening of any kind here. But if you can't even do something this simple, then when you need some help down the road in a bigger way, then we'll have to react accordingly. And I'm sorry to say that, but we've reached out with the olive branches on top of olive branches, on top of olive branches, and we get nowhere. Absolutely nowhere. Know is the only word they know when it comes to Saint Francis and that's just, doesn't cut it anymore. So you know, what goes around comes around. I'm hoping that they will rethink this out and look at the bigger, broader picture with JPAs in the future, regionalization in the future and all the things that can benefit both cities. I was hoping for that now with the new majority, but it doesn't seem like that's at that level yet. So I'm hoping that this new mediator, this new engineer with a different voice, maybe they'll listen to him, that they don't listen to us, but I'm I'm hoping. I hope is a good thing. I just don't, I'm running out of hope with Oak Grove. So just, just to let you know how I am, I will reach, I will let you know, um as I hear more from Dan, I'll keep you abreast of what's going on. Hopefully he can reason with them and show them that is it's the right thing to do, do it the right way and not the wrong way. Our concern is if we, they, we, they do it halfway with just an overlay, it will affect the long-term, a long effect uh result of a of a full construct that we're doing. We need to do this right and get it done. So I'll end with that right there. County Market reached out to me uh Friday it was, and I talked to Todd about this and I'll see what comments he has. But since it appears that since we put that barricades up on Bridge Street to that uh east, that site east to uh east of uh of uh Casey's or west of Casey's, rather. Since we put those barricades up, they've been having some problems with people hanging, you know, teens hanging in their parking lots. This goes, this has been going on for quite a long time. There's certain times here it does. Last Thursday, I was surprised to see many kids out of school when I, when school was in session. I don't know if it's because they're at home, you know, uh being taught there and let out whatever. But they brought a concern to us that I brought to Todd. Todd, can you, I I imagine you did get back to Jeff and 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 Bob about it? Can you tell us anything that you've done with it at all?
Yeah, I spoke to Jeff on Friday, just after I spoke with you. And this is a reoccurring, you know, topic every, seemingly every year, every spring. He would agree with that. Uh we get new groups of kids looking for places to hang out. And when, you know, so he's just basically encouraging us to get through there a little more often. Our officers, you know, when they observe groups, they'll they'll move them along and uh you know, if we have to enforce our loitering, loitering, sorry, um ordinance, we will. But for the most part, it's just uh be on your way and and you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, these teens uh comply and it's not an issue. Uh we're encouraging them to find different places besides private property. Such as County Market, apparently they've been getting some, some cases where they've uh, you know, kind of are offending other shoppers and swearing and things like that and occasionally leaving trash in the parking lot and stuff like that. So um nothing we can't deal with. Well, you know, the message has been passed on to our officers, officers, so they're paying a little closer attention to that. And these groups, they move around. Again, they're teenagers. They look for places to hang out and talk with each other. They're encouraged, uh you know, we're encouraging them to maybe visit a public park and do that, kind of what parks are intended for, as long as they're not leaving trash there and stuff or harassing people there. Or go to someone's house. You know, I guess when I was a teenager, we used Taco Bell until the cops kick us out and we didn't go back. We went to somebody's house. I mean, it's just, that's kind of what we're encouraging them to do to do. And um like I said, we deal with this every year, um pretty much, so uh nothing new, but uh we're, we'll deal with it.
All right, thank you, Todd. I I think that really brings up a point here as as we're talking about our parks plan and uh future buildings with with uh activities in them and other things to do here. I think it's important if we if we create an atmosphere out there where we have activities going on uh through our 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 buildings in the future here, like I said, or or through our parks plan and all that, that we can get places for them to go and have activities. Seems like when kids are bored, that's when things happen. So maybe that that's in our future, that can be uh uh solved or have a solution to it as we progress in those areas that we're talking about today. You know, the the seeds we're planting today hopefully will pay off dividends in the future and that we're addressing the right things as again, parks and trails, our buildings and stuff like that for our future city hall fire station that we'll be talking about down the road. But these things, uh you know, again, I can't, I can't address, I I can't emphasize enough that the future uh city hall fire station that we're talking about cannot just be a building to come in to pay bills and pull permits. It's gotta be something for activities, things that we can have our kids do in that and expend their energy and all that. And it's being done in those cities. This is nothing new here. Just has to be, you know, accustomed to our size and our pocketbook and see what we can do. But I'm glad that we're thinking along those lines. I think it's important. We have young kids here and and without a lot of stuff to go on in our city. That's the problem right now. Basically, we have very limited events and things like that right now with pioneer days being canceled and whatnot from the pandemic adding to all that. I'm just glad that we're looking at, looking at it and addressing some of these issues. We're down the road. It takes time to solve it, but uh I think we're at least addressing it and that's a good thing. So thank you, Todd, for getting back to them and addressing that to the best of our ability. On that, I would just say, I wanna thank staff, council for all your work on the zoning, as I mentioned before, on the on the pandemic and working together. Getting us to this point where we actually have some momentum here and hopefully taking advantage of the second growth spurt that we could really fully take advantage of that we didn't before nineteen ninety, two thousand ten. I'm hoping that um Anderson companies will come up with some solutions, uh uh some ideas with staff and and get something going there. I think it's a good site and that river. I hope that we can get some potential off there, you know, use off that river and promote it like we've talked about in the past. That would be very good. I know we've had some people looking at uh at uh, you know, the restaurants in that night area and stuff like that that Kate talks about. I'm hoping things will be, we'll see changes in twenty-one, twenty-two that will uh start some momentum here. And Kate, just also, how is Vista doing with that property uh for their assisted living? That's still moving forward then?
Mayor and council, they are looking to possibly make the June planning commission with their site plan, so.
Okay, very good. Okay. All right. Anything else on the on that property next to Man City's at all? Anything going there that we know about or should or can?
No, we have received the altar surveys back and there are some steps that the city needs to take before those could be turned over or developed. So um Joe and I will be working on that more this week with with Hawkinson Anderson.
Okay. Okay, uh on that, like I say, I wanna thank again staff, department heads and all that. It was a long interview process for the uh for the city clerk. Went down from seventeen down to six, down to three, down to two, down to one, finally. That one will be starting on May seventeenth, so um I wanna thank uh Jenny for doing all her work right now. Getting us through this period as the assistant, keep it up. You're doing a great job. And uh just thank you all, guys, for everything. Appreciate it. Takes a lot of hard work to get where we are and things are gonna take a lot of more hard work to get to where we wanna be. But together as a team, we will be able to pull it off. I have no doubt about that at all. So on that, I'm gonna, any future, any further business, Joe, that we have to take on or discuss?
No further business, Your Honor.
Can I ask Todd one? Can I ask Todd? Todd?
Yeah, please.
Are there barriers up there anymore or is it just the no loitering signs?
Up at the vacant lot?
Yeah.
I believe the barriers are still there.
Oh, okay, cuz maybe I just missed them. I thought when we went by it today that I.
I I did not get by there today, but I was by there at the end of the week, last week, and they were still there, so I'm a su-
Right, yes. And just so you know, I'm still pushing for that skateboard part, Mr. Mayor. I think that'd be.
Put it all, see what comes out at the end of the results. Okay, let's. On that, with no future uh further business, I'm gonna join, I I adjourn this meeting on Monday, May third at seven thirty-nine and just say to everybody, keep safe, keep healthy, keep safe. And thank you very much. Good night, everybody.